Will now convene this July 29th, 2025 Town Council Show Cause Hearing. Do we have a motion to go into the show cause hearing?
Make a motion to go into the hearing.
Give a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we are in the hearing. The subject of this hearing is to allow the owner, agent, and/or all other persons having an interest in the property located at 2647 Centerville Road to show cause why this structure, which is considered to be a dangerous building, should not be repaired, vacated, or demolished in accordance with the report of the building inspector. I will now call upon Gay Adams, Town Clerk, to present evidence of the published notice of this hearing.
This is to certify that the annexed legal advertisement has been published in the publications and insertions listed below. The Mill Show Cause was published in the Bay Times/Record Observer on July 18th and July 25th, 2025.
Thank you. Now we will have a presentation by the owner of the property.
Do you want him to come up and just give a...
Yeah, I guess.
Let me request you guys speak up because I'm hard of hearing. I haven't heard what you said.
You can come on up, Mr. Geshwell. Right up here. Just right in one of those seats right there.
I assume you just got finished saying whatever that sign was on the front of my building?
No, not yet.
Oh.
No, not yet.
Could you repeat what you said then?
Yeah, all we've said so far is that this is the show cause hearing.
Right.
For you, you have an opportunity to show cause for why this structure, which is considered to be dangerous, should not be repaired, vacated, or demolished in accordance with the report of the building inspector.
Okay. Well, I understand that you guys have worked with me or have been very, very patient with me. I've got four bids to have the building demolished, so I'm not sure what else I need to do other than to say that once I demolish, I need to keep the party wall between the concrete block building and the old mill, which will leave about two and a half stories of height. It's going to be very ugly when I tear the building down because you're going to see the concrete block building. Hopefully, I'll have a metal building put in its place. I guess my questions to the board here is, once I demolish the building, the electrical feed is at the front of the building? And I remember Carolyn Brinkley saying that I had to be, if anything new was built, I mean, start from scratch, it had to be 35 feet from the road. Is that correct?
I would have to double check what the setbacks are, but it's probably close to that.
Are you Carolyn?
Yes.
Okay. You had mentioned that with fresh, without, I can keep what I had because it's considered pre-existing or something. What I'm trying to get to is, once the building is demolished, I have to keep the party wall that is adjacent to the concrete block building. It's going to be a horrendous sight for anybody who drives by. So therefore, I know I want to put up a fence, a privacy fence. There's not one in front of the building now, but I need to put one up to keep people from going in the building because I won't be able to, well, I'll put a plywood up as quickly as I can. But I'm saying that it's going to be a horrendous sight until a metal building can be constructed in front of it that matches the height of this concrete block roof.
So you said you have bids for demolition. Do you have the demolition scheduled?
No, ma'am. I have three bids to consider, I mean, four bids to consider, and I'll have those by Friday. They should all be in by Friday. I give you the list of the contractors and their names if you need them as evidence, but...
Do you have that with you?
Hello?
Do you have that with you?
Want to turn my phone back on?
Do you have written bids from the...
Just one. The other three...
Just one in writing?
Yes, sir. Whoever I'm talking to.
Okay, is there anything else you want to share before we move on to the building
There was the fence. And now I got to get the, okay, all involved is the meters and everything, the permits for the demolition. Bear with me one second while I...
He will likely need a fence permit as well, right? Because it'd be a privacy fence.
I just, I don't even think we're there. Just to make sure everyone understands, we're here
Yeah.
for the town to make a determination if the town is going to do something to take care of this building because you've not done so. I'm not so worried about future permits you may desire as the current status of the building as it sits.
Is that directed at me? I do not understand what you're saying.
Yes, that's directed in general. That's what the hearing is. It's not a hearing about permits you might need to build a fence. It's about the current dangerous building on the property.
You guys want to tear the building down? That's what it's all about, right?
Well, it's also a matter of what, how much of the building are we going to tear down? Okay, because there are...
The only building I'm tearing down is the old mill itself. I need to keep the party wall between the old mill and some, maybe almost three quarters of the buildings are going to be torn down. I mean, it's going to maintain the height so that the roof on the concrete block building is sustained. From that point down, the front of the building is going to be totally torn away. So I mean, I'm thinking you guys would be satisfied because I could consider a hazard to anybody on 213. Not that it ever would, but you guys are very concerned about public safety, and I can well understand that. My intentions, that are all blown to hell now, is I was going to retire and do all the work myself, but unfortunately, I'm going blind, so I can't see the work to do it. And anyway, it is what it is. Like I said, you guys have been very patient with me, no doubt.
Is there anything else you want to share, or should we move on to the building inspector?
I wanted to, well, I don't know if this is the format for bringing it up, but...
We can move on to the building inspector, and if you find it and wish to send it, you can send it to Carolyn so that we have it.
Okay, I wish I could hear you guys.
You have someone here helping you, right? That can hear us, or...
Yeah.
You talking to me?
Are you able to maybe speak more closely to him so he can hear what's going on, or...
I'll try to do a little bit of that.
He's my, that's my nephew, he's my driver.
Yeah.
Because I can't drive, can't get around. Can you find where we gave us that list of contractors?
And can you provide us the bid you do have in writing?
Yeah, one moment. But these are the people that are, they, that don't have given the bids yet. So here's Palmer Enterprises Demolition Services, Bayside Excavation.
And ISI is another one out of Baltimore.
Okay, all right, and then that's the third one without...
It's Justin. Now, when I have Matt.
And the one he has the bid from is ISI. And let me see if I can, he's sent...
I don't think Matt gave me his address, but there are four contractors. This isn't the area where I would say, hey, I'm going to tear down the front of the building. Will you give me permission to double the size of my Butler Building so I can store things in it?
We can't make that determination here. That's not what this hearing is about.
Okay, okay, I don't know. I'm getting educated as we go. I'm trying to feel what I thought I had to bring up or wanted to bring up was the fence and the doubling of the Butler Building. And the addition of a, I have to put a permit in for the metal building that faces the street.
And there, here's a proposal. One second to upload.
ISI, ISI. Okay, so you can go on with your building inspector that I walked through the building with.
Okay. Yeah, you can go back to your seat if your nephew wants to
Oh.
help you do that, and we'll have the building inspector come on.
Do you want me to just email this?
Yeah, send it to Carolyn. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Need to do it for you?
Yeah, if you can find it.
All right, next, we will hear testimony from the building inspector. After that, any adjacent property owners, and finally, any other persons having an interest in the building. So we'll hear from the building inspector first, and then when we get to interested persons, you'll need to keep your comments to three minutes. Welcome.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? Take it away.
The gentleman was nice enough to let me walk through. It's been the second time I've been through this building in a couple of years.
Can you first say who you are?
My name is Hal Davis.
Okay.
I'm the building inspector. I work for the Middle Department Inspection Agency. We're a third-party agency that does building inspections for several...
Can you re-say? If you're the building inspector, can you...
I can't really turn it up anymore.
Yeah, I know, because it gave that. You can sit there.
I appreciate that. I just want to hear what you've got to say.
Sorry.
Thank you.
So I've been in this building a couple of times, and it's gotten worse since the first time I've been in there. It's, this is one of those buildings, these, the way these things are built, you know, it could, you get the right wind or the right snow load or something like that, it could come down. You could drive a truck through the front side, it may stand, you never know, but they're close proximity to the road, something definitely has to be done with this building. My main concern is time with getting this building down. This thing is filled three floors with stuff, and he's got nowhere to put this stuff. So my guess is, how long, my question is, how long would it take you to get all that stuff out of there, even if you had a bid?
I'd hustle as best I could. You saying three weeks? I don't know. Three weeks, or hopefully if I wasn't too hot, but who knows?
So that, that's one of the things that would be my concern is, you know, if this is going to come down and you're going to get bids, and, you know, and that's if you can accept one of the bids, whether it's too high for you. But the other concern is, the building behind it, he's trying to keep, the roof is falling in on that. Other than the block walls, there's nothing there.
It's a flat roof, yeah.
Okay. You can sit up here so that you can hear, but we're not going to entertain a back-and-forth between you and Mr. Davis. So the pictures are jarring. I've never been inside this building. I find the pictures jarring.
It's a neat old building. It's got, if somebody had, the bill was cleared out, it'd be worth somebody coming there and save the timbers and stuff in that building because it's, it's a neat old building. It is, some of it is salvageable.
But overall, you don't find the structure to be salvageable?
Anything salvageable, depending on how much money and time you want to throw to it.
Right.
But yeah, my opinion is definitely something needs to be done, and needs to be done in a timely fashion. You know, it could be just a freak storm come through here, and that thing ends up in 213.
Yeah. So I believe you were last in the property in April? Is that right? April? Okay.
Whatever my letter was dated.
Yeah. Yeah, April. Okay.
Yeah, April 22nd.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Davis?
So your assessment that the demolition could successfully leave the concrete block walls, but the roof over the concrete block walls will need to be demolished as well?
It's almost there. It needs to be cleaned up more than anything because it's down.
Right, but the walls are reliable and can stay?
Yeah, I mean, without going further, but there's, they don't seem to have deterioration and cracks and falling down. It's a concrete block wall. Mainly, the roof is the problem, you know, with, once everything's cleaned up around there, you can get a better assessment, I would think.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Davis?
Which, which part, which part of the building is the concrete block? It's as far as this part?
It's right behind it. You got the mill, and it's attached to the back wall, backside of that building.
Okay, and then there's a...
Of this. It's this, it's one building. It's just the back half of that building.
Yeah, because I went on Google Maps, it kind of looks like, oh, it's pretty different.
It's not really, it's kind of a part of the metal building, but it's not, you know, the, the, the old mill could come down, that building could actually be salvageable. But the property needs to be cleaned up. There's old cars, I mean, there's a bunch of, you know, stuff that just needs to be cleaned up out of there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. No other questions, right?
No.
Good, okay.
I'm available if you need.
Yes, thank you. All right, next, we'll hear from any adjacent property owners. I think we're the primary adjacent property owner.
I think so.
Okay. Now, any persons who have an interest in the property. To be, to be clear, the law defines having an interest in the property as having an actual financial interest in the property, like a mortgage. In the interest of transparency, we are going to allow the public to provide comments, but we are going to be super strict about the three minutes in a way that we never are. So we are going to allow comments, but Carolyn is going to keep time, and we're going to stop comments at three minutes per person. So are there any interested persons that wish to speak? Go ahead. Come on up to, come sit next to Mr. Geshwell so he can hear. You got to sit in, you got to talk in the mic.
I don't have a financial interest in the property.
Yes, that's fine.
I just want to clarify that.
You can state your name for the record.
My name's Frederick View, and I'm speaking actually on behalf of the Queen Anne's County Historical Society, because we take a very specific interest and a genuine interest in historic properties. And we think that there could have been, at some point in time, a historic value of this particular property, but it has been allowed to be so deteriorated and in such a horrible state of disrepair. Our biggest concern is safety for the community. Aesthetically is a secondary concern. It's an embarrassment to our community for people to drive in and go through our town. And our organization as the historical society is really interested in not only preserving important historic properties, but also to present an interest in people visiting our community, to have an interest in historic properties. And this is one that we feel has been allowed to be in such a horrible state of disrepair and safety that according to, and we had a board meeting regarding this particular property, and we've all come to the conclusion, in spite of our interest for historic properties, that it would be in the best interest of our community for it to be completely demolished and torn down and just eliminated so that it's not a hazard or, you know, from a safety standpoint in particular, you know, from the community. So I'm only speaking on behalf, it's my personal view as well, but it's also on behalf of the historical society for our community and our county. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to comment? Come on up.
If I can just stand?
We'll have to remove the microphone. You got it? Okay.
Give a second to turn it up.
Sorry, I have my ringer on, so please.
That you see. In a mess now is the third building since 1886. The first one was constructed, that looks like this. The first one was constructed, they began the construction in 1886, and in March of 1887, the building was inaugurated. Seventy-five barrels of corn a day, major employer in the town of Centerville. In August of 1887, the owner went to Baltimore to do the business with the bank, got off the boat to be told that the entire building burned to the ground. So we're talking March to August 1887. Brand-new building burned to the ground. $300 of insurance was all they had. They raised an extra 500, and that was it. And it took on a whole number of owners ever since. I have no problem with taking this down because it does not represent in any way the early history, but it does represent the late 1800s when we started back on our feet after the Civil War. So whatever your decision is, I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to comment? State your name for the record.
David Kaufman. I represent a client that's interested in the, in the structure. He's an historical guy and what his goal would be to renovate it. And he doesn't have to have the building to remain. The building could come down, and they could use parts of the structure to recreate, you know, using the timbers and some of the things to represent the historical nature of the, of the structure. So we're open, whatever the town thinks, but my client definitely is interested.
And your client has attempted to work with Mr. Geshwell to purchase the property?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to comment? People are welcome to provide written testimony as well. The Centerville Town Council will consider all testimony and comments presented this evening before making findings of fact as to whether or not the building in question is a dangerous building, and based upon those findings, the Town Council may subsequently issue an order to demolish the structure. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I now declare this hearing adjourned. We will now head into discussion. Right, we discuss after.
I, I hope you do discuss because I'd like some guidance.
Some findings, yeah. So in your packets, council, you have not only the letter and photos from Mr. Davis, but also a pretty comprehensive list of the involvement of town staff and members of the council for the last 10 years about this property and challenges at the property in addition to meetings that we've had. I personally met with Mr. Geshwell, with Council Vice President Keel, I guess about a year ago, and as Mr. Geshwell has mentioned, we've been incredibly patient as a town. Every time we meet, there are, or talk to him, or Carolyn talks to him, there are contractors, there are bids coming, there are, and those don't tend to materialize. I am worried about the kind of quick deterioration of the building, the exposure to the elements. We've had kind of increasingly bad storms lately, and every single one, I just think, man, the amount of water getting inside that building, the amount of wind getting inside that building, and it tends to look a little bit worse all the time. So in my opinion, we've given the owner ample opportunity to take action independently, including over the last few months. This is not, this hearing didn't spring up out of nowhere. We've discussed this for months, very publicly for months. We've been in contact with the property owner for years, and so I would hesitate for us to say that, yes, he's free to demolish it himself and wait for bids and spend weeks cleaning it out, and if, if he was here with a plan, here's the contractor that's going to clean it out, here's the contractor that's going to tear it down, that would be one thing, but that's not where we are.
That's right.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I agree. Looking at this timeline, I mean, we've been extremely patient and almost shouldn't have, you know, we've been extremely patient associated with this, the number of years that we've been involved with this in trying to have some...
Should I be able to hear what you guys are saying?
You might need your nephew to help you. I mean, I'm basically yelling into the microphone.
Okay, is this, is there a tape of this so I can listen to it later?
Yes.
Yes.
For recording.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it because I really haven't heard much of what you guys had to say, but I think the bottom line is, the building's coming down. I think, did you allude that I was lying about having a contractor?
I, I mentioned...
You sounded like you were calling me a liar.
Over here.
It was me.
Who was it?
Ashley, the Town Council President.
I don't know who it was, but I heard a woman's voice saying that I was not faithful and that I was basically a liar, and I think that's...
No, that's not at all what I said.
What?
That's not what I said. What I did say, though, is that several times you have told us you are in conversations with contractors.
I have been, and it's because, well, I have, and I'm not a liar. Everything I told you was factual. The fact that nothing was produced was because of financial restraints.
And I totally understand and appreciate that. We've reached a point, in at least my opinion, and I think the opinion of several others up here, that we can't allow your financial constraints to pose an imminent risk to public safety.
Okay, but my fact that I admitted I'm going to have the building demolished, you're denying that?
I'm saying that I don't know that I can allow you the time to collect bids when the town is, what we are considering is taking action to demolish the building ourselves and place a lien on your property to recoup our costs of doing so. And I think this many pages list of times that we have communicated with you about the state of the building and the need for you to do something about it, we've reached the end of the road here for your opportunity to do something about it. I hope you take seriously the fact that the historical society even thinks this building should come down. Never thought I would see the day.
Regardless, okay, I'm not arguing with that, but you're not going to give me the opportunity to pick my, my contractor?
We have given you the opportunity for years.
No, no, well...
When you came here tonight, you should have had a contractor.
Does that, does that, complete ballot, if you reduce that bid right now, would that be...
There's no material difference. If we demolish the building and put a lien on the property, he can cure that lien and maintain ownership of the property. But what he came here tonight to do was negotiate a fence permit, it seems.
Oh, no, no, well...
Or a building, yeah.
God, this is not right.
See, to me, there seems to be a lack of appreciation for the severity of where things have ended up. Like, this is the absolute last way on earth I want to be spending my Tuesday evening. This is the absolute last thing any one of us wants to do up here. I believe super strongly in the rights of private property owners. I care a lot about the historic buildings in our town, but we've just hit the end of the road where it looks like that building's going to be in the road. And so I don't know how much more time it would even be fair to the public to give the property owner. I have to consider
Would you consider...
the needs of the entire town against the needs of one person.
Would you give me till Friday to get my four bids in and then say, okay, this is the contractor I hired to do the job? I mean, four more days?
No, I think you should spend time trying to clear the building out.
What's that?
You should spend your time clearing the building out of your personal property before the property become, before we demolish the property.
But still, I have, I would have the contract in hand.
It doesn't matter.
What's that?
It doesn't matter. We're going to do it ourselves.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's where we're headed.
Right.
Is that we're going to do it ourselves. I don't, no one up here called you a liar, but we've just reached the end of the road. Yes.
Okay, I'm...
It seems that it could be in your favor for us to do this.
And I'm not, I could bid my...
We can, we can look at any written test, any written bids that you can submit concurrent with us soliciting bids.
Okay, I agree. I appreciate that.
If we find a bid that serves the town better and seems more expeditious and is better for the property in general, not necessarily the property owner, but for the property, that's the direction we'll go. If it happens to be a proposal that you have in hand and can share with us, that would be great, but it's not like we're going to call a contractor tomorrow to take it down. So we do need to move on this.
Okay.
And we're trying to be sensitive to your issues. Councilmember Worth has suggested that your highest priority, no matter who does it, your highest priority should be to be removing your personal property as soon as possible.
Okay, are we talking about just the, the mill? That's all we're talking about? The wooden structure?
We don't know until we get a demolition contractor in there to make that determination.
We, we will rely on the word of the inspector.
Okay, and the concrete...
He's the expert on this, more so than any of us, or perhaps even you.
I don't believe that's true, but I'll still submit to you.
Any other discussion, council? Sharon, what do you need from us?
Can I ask one question? With my four bids, your, your contractor's going to meet that bid?
You're, you're welcome to forward your four bids to the town manager as soon as you have them in hand.
Okay, I appreciate that, and then you'll...
And then the town will make a determination on, as to the contractor with those in the mix, if, if we move forward with an order for demolition, which it sounds like there's five votes up here for that, or at least four.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, just to speak, I think it has...
In other words, what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to save money by, if I can find the lowest bid to do the job, if you guys are going to come out and save $300,000 to to tear the building down, that's absolutely, you know, I want to be able to safeguard my finances.
If the lowest bid were to say they could do it in six months, we might lay a higher bid with a shorter timeframe as better for the public interest than the lowest bid. And so the town, if the town issues an order of demolition, the town will determine who the contractor is and what bid satisfies the public interest. Maybe that is cost, maybe it is other factors.
Well, I think the lowest bid that does a good job should be submitted and accepted. What happens when you're a contractor? If your, your guy wins, I still keep those electric at where it's located right now, right?
I don't know the answer to that.
What's that?
I doubt it, yeah.
That would be more a decision for Delmar of a power than any of us.
Yes.
I doubt they will tell us any differently than they would tell you.
Sharon, what do you need from us?
I think I have what I need from you all to prepare findings of fact and demolition orders so that you could act on it at your meeting next week.
We have a meeting in two days.
It's a work session.
It's a work session, okay, and then we have a meeting, meeting next week.
Yeah, next Thursday you have a meeting, it would be in your packets. I have, I've started drafting it, but needed to hear the evidence tonight to add to that, but I will have it ready.
Okay, so you have what you need and then we will take action on it next Thursday, the seventh?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Copy of the...
We adjourned to the hearing, now we have to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, no, sorry.
Yes, we can get you a copy of the meeting.
Is it gonna be cassette form or...
It'll be on the internet.
It's online, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so, sorry, who moved to adjourn?
I'll send you the link in the email.
And you seconded Mr.?
I'll send, I'll send it to you.
I'll feature that.
I'll send it in the email today.
Yes.